Item 6.5, our 10:30 a.m. item, presentation of 2021 drought Clear Lake. And Director Deleon, I believe you are taking the lead on this. I don't know if you went online. There you are.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to defer, and I think we're going to go ahead and start with perhaps Marina, or I think Marina or Dale there in the court.
I believe we're going to start with Dale. And if you want to take the front seats rather than the podium.
Good morning, Dale Carnathan, Lake County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, Emergency Services Manager. We're here today to do a presentation about the activities of the drought task force that was generated by a combination of agencies and is being participated in by multiple jurisdictions, both cities, the county, some of the tribal representatives have also picked in, and special districts, as well as the state Drinking Water Authority and the State Department of Water Resources. We've also had the assistance of some Civic Spark fellows. Okay. I'm used to throwing my voice, so. We've had the assistance, and one of those folks will be making a presentation via Zoom today. So with that, I will turn it over to Marina, and I'll stand by to move in.
Yes, good afternoon, Board. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Marina Delajonis, and I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Watershed Protection District. As Dale mentioned, we are here today to provide an update regarding our July 2021 drought update. We have a few friends who will be joining us, so with that, I am just going to go ahead and dive right in. So as we know, just to set the stage for us, drought is generally defined as a deficiency of precipitation over an extended period of time, usually a season or more, resulting in a water storage. So as we know, California is no stranger to drought. It is a reoccurring feature of our climate, and we recently experienced the five-year event of 2012 through 2016, and along with other notable historical droughts, including the drought of 2007 through 2009, 1987 through 1992, and 1976 and 1977, which we will be referring here in the next few slides. And on, and again, an off and on dry conditions spanning more than a decade in the 1920s and 1930s. So just a little bit more about drought. So they can cause public health and safety impacts, as well as economic and environmental impacts. Public health and safety impacts are primarily associated with catastrophic wildfire risks and drinking water shortage risks for small water systems, which we'll be hearing about in the next few slides. Examples of other impacts from drought relates to costs to homeowners due to loss of residential landscaping, degradation of urban environments due to the loss of landscaping as well, and agricultural land falling and associated job loss, degradation of fishery habitat, and tree mortality with damage to forest ecosystems as well. And here on this slide, you can see a few graphics of the drought as it relates to long-term drought in the West impacts to water supplies, and as it relates to increase of wildfire risk, which we previously heard from Laurel with Clerk, on potential impacts. And then here on the left, we have a graphic from the New York Times as it compares to the drought conditions of June 2021, as it relates to the following previous years. So now I'm going to pass it over to Dale to do, just to cover very specifically about our declared drought that we recently declared from Sheriff Hornig.
Yes, the sheriff declared a local proclamation of emergency on May 6, which was ratified by your board subsequently. That was forwarded to the governor. The governor has added County of Lake to his declaration. And the U.S. Department of Agriculture has also proclaimed that the county is eligible for drought assistance for agriculture purposes. Unfortunately, the state's proclamation, while we did ask for California Disaster Assistance Act assistance, the governor has not yet opened up the coffers of the CDAA. His proclamation basically asked or ordered state agencies to provide physical or material assistance to areas that were suffering from drinking water shortages and agricultural water shortages, and encouraged the state agencies to improve and change some of their water restrictions or their water allocations processes so that those areas could receive more water, regardless of the other conditions that were associated. So right now, while we have a local and a state proclamation, we're not eligible for any funding other than individuals within agriculture. And as I've read the Stafford Act that provides national or federal disaster relief, drought is not considered an emergency under the Stafford Act. So all the funding that we may become eligible for is going to have to come through the state.
All right, so again, just funneling into our current Lake County drought conditions. So the U.S. Drought Monitor is updated each Thursday to show the location intensity of drought across the country. And what the USDA, the U.S. Drought Monitor, use is a five-category system from abnormally dry conditions to exceptional drought conditions. So the USDA is a joint effort of the National Drought Mitigation Center, USDA, and the NOAA. And I will have a link at the very end of this presentation for folks to check out the drought.gov, which has a wealth of knowledge regarding drought, and then, of course, the specifics as it relates to Lake County. So as you can see in this graphic, and I apologize if it's difficult for folks to see, the majority of the county is identified as exceptional drought, and then the other, the northern part of the county is extreme drought. So from when this presentation was created last week, we have jumped up a little bit. So 100% of Lake County is identified as extreme drought. And again, this is the slider blue up top. And then 74.03% of Lake County is rated as exceptional drought. And then just again, looking into the specifics of this, again, this is from the drought.gov. They do update their data every Thursday, so I highly recommend folks to continue to check that out. Not only can you see how drought is affecting us here in Lake County, but the western United States as a whole. So just funneling in into some of the specifics. So 64,000, over 64,000 folks in Lake County are affected by the drought, which as we know, that is if not all of our community. 100% again of Lake County is affected by the drought. And then the 47th driest June was in 2021 over the past 127 years. And then we are at the 14th driest year to date, and 127 years occurred in 2021. Looking at some of the precipitation, so this slide was presented when we did declare the drought in May. Again, I would just like to highlight our current precipitation at 12.28 inches of precipitation here in 2021. We don't anticipate we'll be getting a whole lot of precipitation. We can cross our fingers that today we might get a few sprinkles, but we don't anticipate that that number will be jumping up drastically in the near future. And again, just looking at some of our related dry years, in 2014, we received 17.89 inches of precipitation. And again, looking at '76 and '77, we were at 12.19 inches in 1976, and then 12.46 inches in 1977 of precipitation. So how does this affect our lake? So again, this graph was also shared in May. We have done some update, and this graph is on our Water Resources Facebook page and also on the Water Resources website. We're actively updating this as the days go on. So we can hear, we can see here the legend in the red triangles right here. That is the predicted 2021 adjusted to the 1977 trend. The blue triangles is the predicted 2021 adjusted to the 2014 trend. And then these black triangles that we're looking at, this is the predicted 2021 calculated predictions. So I would just like to outline this disclaimer that these are predictions. So these prediction values were derived from the simplified Penman formula for evaporation rate. Again, these are only predictions, so this just gives us a rough estimate on worst-case scenario. So looking into the future, worst-case scenario, we would be at negative 4.02. In November, best-case scenario, we would be at negative 1.78. Again, I would just like to reiterate that these are predictions. This black line right here, this bold black line right in the middle, this is our current stage height. And it is anticipated that on the first, we would be at negative 1 rumsi, so landing between this blue triangle and this black triangle right here. And I'm covering this section regarding our public boat ramps. Unfortunately, Director Lars Duin with Public Services was not able to be present today, but I did receive an update from him. So here is a status of our county-maintained ramps and their status. So we only have two county-maintained ramps closed, that is Lucerne Harbor and Keeling Park, Crystal Lakeway Extension and North Lakeport, also referred to as the Hamilton Boat Launch. And they are not closed, but we are in close communications with our Marine Patrol as well. We also have our FOGA ramp monitors who are out on the boat actively speaking with fishermen, et cetera. So we're in close communication with public services, with the cities, and with Marine Patrol in terms of the closure of the ramps. So if any of these public boat ramps were to be closed, we would be making that notification on Facebook. If you have any questions regarding county-maintained boat ramps, please feel free to reach out to our Lake County Public Services Department. And then we also have some information on our city boat ramps as well. So the city of Clear Lake and the city of Lakeport, both of their ramps are still open to the public. Again, we're keeping a close eye on them. And both the cities and the county are in very early conversations and possible ramp extensions. Again, that will take some time, so please stay tuned from the county on that if we have any headway on that. And now I will be passing it over to Scott Hornig with Special Districts to go over our water use in Lake County from our water purveyors.
All right, good morning. I am Scott Hornig. I'm the Deputy Administrator for Special Districts. These are just showing some comparisons of water production from last year compared to this year. We have basically three systems that are using right about what they used last year at this time. We have one system, Spring Valley, which is using about 10% less than we were last year at this time. And then we have Kelseyville, which is using about 9% more than we were last year at this time. We have identified a leak in Kelseyville that we're working to get a contractor onboard so we can make that repair and do away with that leak, and hopefully tighten those numbers up a little bit better. But we still have room for conservation and water saving. There are some other ones, some other comparisons there from California Water Service as well as Golden State. Fairly similar trends to ours. They're using maybe slightly a little bit more than they were last year. So again, there's conservation and water savings that can still be done out there. Currently, Special Districts is in our Stage 1 of our drought plan, which is a voluntary 20% reduction that we're looking for from the customers. We have conservation tips and information are located on our website and our Facebook page. We have a link to the savewater.com, which has a lot of good information and tips on saving water and conserving. We're also pursuing funding to extend our two lake intakes, as well as get backup wells for those two systems, as well as pursuing a possible backup well for Spring Valley to give us some redundancy. We are working to get a contractor onboard to lower the intake at North Lakeport. Currently, it's right at about minus 3.25 rumsi. We're hopeful that we can drop it maybe 2 to 3 feet to get us down under that minus 5 and hopefully be safe for the summer. The other water systems are all increasing advertising to get people to conserve more. They've got some rebates for high-efficiency fixtures and things. And we're just trying to do our best to get people to save water and conserve it.
Thank you, Scott. And now I will be passing it over to Craig Wetherby, Director of Lake County Environmental Health.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me take a look at this slide. We took a look at all the wells that have been permitted for this year, and we wanted to take a, see how that compared to previous years. As you can see, 2021 is shaping up to be the largest number of private wells being sunk in Lake County. We're looking at 133 as of July 22. We anticipate that number will close close to 200 by the end of the year. We are seeing a lot of wells being put in. There was a huge push in wells between May and June, which we believe was fueled by speculation of wells, the idea that wells were going to be stopped. So a lot of the drillers were putting those wells in. On the right side, you'll see a picture of Lake County. Wanted to demonstrate that we have actually received reports of wells going dry, although they are at a regional level, not per address. So really, it looks like the south end of Lake County is really the primary focus for wells drying up. So far, this is not in their drinking water. This is in their agricultural wells for livestock watering and so forth. But this is kind of the tip of the iceberg. We are going to see more failures, and it is likely going to continue in the South County and will eventually work up into the North County as well.
Thank you, Craig. And now we will hand it over to another AmeriCorps Civic Spark Fellow, Marlis Jean, who will be going over the Lake County Drought Task Force.
Thanks, Marina. Hello, everyone. My name is Marlis. I'm here to just briefly talk to you today about the drought task force, which is just a part of the project that I was helping pilot in Lake County. So I'm essentially piloting some pending legislation that would require the development of water shortage contingency plans in a situation in which water may run out if it's a dry year, a drought year. This is not a requirement yet, but there's a suite of recommendations that includes the formation of something like a drought task force in regions where they might be susceptible to drought. So that's what I came in to do. I essentially gathered folks who work in the region in water resources, and together, we've been meeting for the past about 12 weeks or so. And it's, it's, right here is our mission statement. It's really designed just for us to have conversations around the table to reach some goals for the protection of safe drinking water, for public safety, for the economic vitality of your region. We know how important Clear Lake is to Lake County, as well as fire protection, also extremely important. Agriculture, for many reasons. There's a lot of reasons why it's important to preserve your water resources. And so that's the ultimate goal of this group. If you shift to the next slide, Marina. So it's essentially, like I just mentioned, it's a group of, we're all volunteering our time to meet on a weekly basis to work collaboratively and identify potential solutions for where there might be high vulnerabilities. And so some of them, some of the conversations are really just around like, how are your customers doing? How are folks on their own private wells doing? We are trying to promote consistent regional messaging about water conservation. You may have seen signs here and there around the county about the fact that we're in a drought. It's important to save water. Really, it's just a space for folks in the county to come together and exchange their knowledge and resources. And then this is a, just want to make very clear, it's not a board-appointed committee. It's a group of stakeholders who, like I mentioned, voluntarily meet up on a weekly basis to discuss these goals and just, you know, have kind of this knowledge sharing, this space for knowledge sharing, like I mentioned. And so these are some participating members. There's tribal representatives who attend these meetings. There's folks from the county who sometimes come to these meetings. There's cities and other local purveyors from around the county who attend. And a lot of folks, you know, operate their, you know, on different sizes. They have different number of staff. They have different resources at hand. So it really is just a space for sharing resources and knowledge that has been really helpful for a lot of these folks. So here's just a little snapshot of some things that have come out of these meetings. The, you may have seen some buses driving around the county that have some signage on the side of them, some public service announcements about the drought, how you can save water. There's a couple of changing messaging message signs like around the county, the Caltrans signs that indicate that we're in a drought right now. There's some marquees and billboards across the county, including Robinson Rancheria, as well as Twin Peaks, sorry, Twin Pines Casino. There should be some like messaging you see up there. A couple of fire districts in your county are putting messages up on their marquees to indicate that we're in a drought and it's important to save water. There's also a Lake County Drought Task Force Facebook page, if you care to look that up online. And I, of course, this presentation and the future outcomes of this group that's working together includes a, potentially a letter to you all in the future about, with some recommendations we have, which would be the next slide. Some things that we discuss, and some things that we're hoping to continue to discuss as we move forward with this group, is well-drilling accountability, just making sure we know where all the wells are going in the county and where they have gone in the past. Just literally having data on where wells are is a great way to manage your water resources and understand where vulnerabilities lie, as well as strengthen and criteria for environmental review of permit applications, particularly when water usage is a huge component of that. If it's an agricultural operation, it's best to understand how much water would be used for a project like that. So understanding how it might impact the aquifer or other water resources around it. And ultimately, public outreach and education, like I mentioned before, just spreading the word. We're in a drought. It's important to save water. How can we consistently message across the lake, across the region, across the county? And at the end of it all, we're just hoping that you, the Board of Supervisors, support the work that we're doing as a working group and can help give us guidance on how to move forward so we can continue to make sure that Lake County has a viable water source moving forward in these dry years we're probably going to encounter.
Thank you, Marlis. So just to piggyback off of the drought task force recommendations, the next steps for us here at the county level. So again, we anticipate, since it is a declared local emergency, we anticipate that we will be coming back to the Board at the end of summer, early fall, for another drought 2021 update presentation, just following the presentations that we've done in the past and then the one today. As Marlis mentioned, the Lake County Drought Task Force, again, which is a work group, we have drafted a letter to the Board of Supervisors with some recommended voluntary water conservation measures. As some of the folks on this presentation have outlined, some of the water purveyors have already recommended from their users for voluntarily water reduction. But again, we'll be bringing that letter to the Board in the near future on behalf of the Lake County Drought Task Force of that letter to the Board to present those voluntary recommendations for review and approval or guidance on that letter. And again, Marlis, as she mentioned, continue public outreach and engagement. This is probably one of the most important things that we can do. I know that a lot of the county, cities, water purveyors, et cetera, tribal representatives, they have been able to share resources and information. Same with our friends at the state and federal level as well. I will be including some of these resources in the next slide. But just getting the word out there, getting these resources out there. There are some things that folks can look up on how to save water, how to conserve water. As mentioned previously, drought is not a new thing for California, but it is something that we should always keep in mind, whether we're in a drought or not. It is important to conserve water. You know, we only have the water that we have here on this planet, so it's important to just be water-wise all the time. And again, we will be coming to the Board in the near future for support of and direction from the Board for the continuation of the drought task force work group. So as Marlis mentioned, this was something that she was able to work collaboratively with, with her Civic Spark Fellow, Bethany, who I believe is also on this call. This was their idea to get this work group going. This is something that Marlis mentioned. Will be in the near future throughout the state. We'll see a lot of these work groups pop up. So hoping to just gain some support and guidance from the Board. This is something that we would like to continue. I know that there is strong support from the representatives of the drought task force, as Marlis mentioned. We've been meeting for the last 12 weeks or so, and there is a lot of support from the current drought task force volunteers to continue on with these conversations. How that looks like, that's what we're still looking at. I've been hoping to provide some guidance and support from that. So moving forward, here are some of the resources that we have that we've been able to get information from this presentation. And just as we've been able to have these conversations and collaboration and whatnot regarding our drought, how it's looking currently, what we can anticipate in the future. We are also here at Water Resources, are working on OneDroughtHub that we can link pages to environmental health. If you want to report a drought, you know, your well going dry, or a special district, or the water purveyors. So once we get that up and going, we'll be sure to share that with the community via Facebook and of course, have it on our Water Resources page. So folks can just go to one landing page and have resources to, you know, whether it be Water, the California Department of Water Resources. They also have some very helpful information. I know that they have been a strong support of this drought task force work group. They have information where you, as a community member, can report if your household, if your private well has gone dry. Of course, to save our water, they have all sorts of tips and tricks to just be water-wise all the time. And then again, a lot of the information that we shared today regarding statistics were from drought.gov. With that, we also have our information here with the county. If you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to us. We're more than happy to answer any questions or help point you in the right direction when it comes to being water-wise and just our current drought conditions. So with that being said, I am going to stop sharing my screen, and I will open it up to any other folks who are on this, who helped with this presentation, do any final parting words before I pass it back over to the Board.
Are there any other members from the drought task force that wish to speak before we open it up for the public? That would be you.
I'm part of the task force, but I'll give you CalFire update.
Please. You're unlisted, but you're on the task force, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, good morning. My name is Jake Cannon. I've met probably most of the Board here, most of the folks attending. So I'm with CalFire. I'm Battalion Chief in Lake County. And I've been asked to give a quick CalFire update. So first and foremost, I think where the drought's affecting us is the fuels condition. I apologize in advance for this graph. You're not going to be able to read this, but it details out over the last year and a half, the fuel content, or the moisture content of our fuels. So the two of note for us are, we pull our fuel samples from Canuckdie and Walker Ridge.
Hold on one second. If you can share the screen, because it's not popping up on Zoom.
Oh, okay, got it.
We all see it here. Little technicality. It's because it's up on the corner. You got it. It's, it's open in the corner on the right, up, up, up. There it is. There you go.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, can you see it on Zoom? I don't have, I can't see it.
Yes, we can see it now.
Whoops. Wrong way.
Hit present.
Two, I'm on three screens, actually.
If you just click present at the bottom of that PowerPoint presentation. Because I could see it fine on Zoom, if you can click present.
Oh, that's not what I'm, I'm trying to get the full page here. And then F5.
Perfect.
Everybody got it?
Yes.
Okay, so the big items of note here, the Canuckdie fuel moisture numbers and the Walker Ridge fuel, fuel moisture numbers. So over here on the right is the current numbers that we have. Walker Ridge is sitting at 65% for the brush samples. And then Canuckdie is sitting at 72%. So a little bit of background on that, 60% is considered critical fuel moisture, where the live fuels will burn the same as a dead fuel. So we're getting pretty close to that. It's not unusual. It happens every year. But the thing that's different from this year, from previous years, is that we're reaching that point about a month to a month and a half ahead of schedule. So that will affect us. Covered right there. All those fuel samples were taken on June 30. So we should be getting new fuel samples here in the next few days. And so we'd anticipate, of course, that those numbers are going to be lower. CalFire's current resource status, just wanted to touch on that. We have Cal Fire's current resource status, just wanted to touch on that, we have the Dixie Fire, Tamarack Fire, and the Park Fire. Dixie and Tamarack are both large acreage fires and they're drawing a lot of resources away from the county. Uh, current, we generally run two engines out of all of our local Cal Fire stations, and right now we're down to one because of the, the resource needs on the other fires. Uh, one thing I would add, a point of note is that since we are a state agency, if we did get a large scale or significant event here, we would be drawing resources from surrounding counties and most likely back from some of these fires as well. Crew strength, right now we're sitting the same as we normally do, we have two crews, uh, we have the Conocti crews and uh, what's added last year was the Blue Ridge crews, so uh, the Blue Ridge crews are no longer incarcerated hand crews, we're running those with firefighter ones, and we're seeing pretty good success uh, with that new program. Um, the other item of note here, I'll move on to the next one, we just got our new helicopter up at Boggs, so the new helicopter is a Blackhawk, we're calling it the Cal Fire Hawk or S70I, the identifier is still Copter 104, it's got a thousand gallon tank, and so that increases the capacity of uh, water that we can put on a fire by just about a factor of three, so that should be a great benefit for us. Um, additionally, that has enough fixed hoist so we can do rest, it increases our rescue capabilities as well. Um, as far as the drought augmentation, uh, the Governor approved $80.74 million to augment our firefighting capabilities, primarily that's gone to almost 1,400 additional firefighters that we brought on, it also provided for early hire of our uh, firefighters that are associated with the aviation program to get the, get them up and running, especially with the advent of the new helicopter, they need to come on about a month, month and a half early to take care of their training requirements. The rest of this money is going toward CCC crew staffing, the supervision on those crews, and then also the National Guard crew staffing, the bulk of the 1,400 firefighters will be distributed on firefighter one hand crews, such as the Blue Ridge crews throughout the I figured I'd mention fuel reduction, I heard clerk come up several times during this conversation, and that's, uh, they're doing good work and we'll continue to support them where we can. Uh, they've been entrusted with the maintenance of the Riviera's fuel breaks, so the, we call it the Mount Conocti Interface Project, that we've, uh, it was Lauren mentioned that earlier. Additionally, all of our Cal Fires, Cal Fire crews that we have available, they'll do fuel reduction projects, and primarily we're focusing on uh, projects that benefit community protection as opposed to uh, fuel reduction down the middle of uh, unpopulated areas. And then finally, the fuels crew out of Kelsey Cobb, it works from approximately uh, November until May, it's uh, 10 people on a fire engine, they go out and they do fuel reduction, so they're, they're running saws, uh, cutting, piling, burning, we've been assisting landowners, owners with burns, uh, conducting VMPs where we can, and other related work. And figured I'd touch on fire activity, so 2020, we all know that was a busy fire year, um, to date in 2020, or up to July 24th, we had 4,854 fires for 118,000 acres approximately. 2021, we have had about 11, or about 1,000 additional starts, so 5,500 starts for 456,000 acres, so we're already surpassing those numbers from 2020. Uh, one interesting side note there, however, until mid-July, we had more ignitions but less acreage than in 2020, so uh, some of the discussions on that are effects of weather or it, our augmented initial attack capabilities were making a difference. And then the Dixie Fire started, and then now our acreages are much beyond what we had in 2020. Fire activity locally, no major fires to date, and uh, I see one of the supervisors knocking on wood, and I agree, uh, majority of the fire activity has been up in Siskiyou, uh, Modoc, Lassen Counties, and Plumas, and that was due to numerous lightning starts in early July. And I would add, those are a mix of federal responsibility area fires and state responsibility area, uh, which they're still working on a, on a couple of those. And that is all I have for you, I'll open to questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any further uh, members from the task force have any comments or presentations? All right, hearing and seeing none, if we can go ahead and end your uh, sharing of the screen, if that's possible.
Okay.
At the very bottom, you should be able to get that.
Good.
Perfect, we are good. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board, any comments or questions from the Board on this item?
Yep, I do.
Supervisor Pyska, please begin.
Um, well, I'm just curious if you think the new helicopter is helping with the um, keeping the small fire small shake?
So far, we've had pretty good success on the smaller fires, so the, I think the largest that they've responded to in the new helicopters, probably on the order of 50 acres or so, and uh, ground crews have noticed a difference in the volume of water coming down to assist them, so, yes.
Right, that's excellent news. So I just wanted to respond um, to some of the um, to the, to the recommendations of the Drought Task Force, I am in full support of those recommendations, and uh, you know, it's really important for us to look long-term at the sustainability of um, our communities and our agriculture, and so taking a look um, at cumulative use is really important, and I, you know, I was happy to see the Facebook page, I didn't know that existed, I got on there and I liked it, so now I'm following it, and I, I hope um, more people do as well. One of the comments that I continue to get is people will call me and tell me that their wells have run dry, and I encourage them to report it immediately, a lot of people don't know what to do or where to do so, to do that, so I'm just wondering if you could just put it out there one more time, really simple steps, what do you do if you're, if you're experiencing well reduction, or if your well's gone completely dry?
And Deputy Director Dela Giannis, is that possible for you to share with us?
Yes, I'm gonna pass it over to Director Craig Weatherby, I see he unmuted himself.
Uh, yes, so we absolutely encourage anybody who is suffering from dry wells, uh, to contact our office, uh, and make us aware of it. Um, simultaneously, you can also post your information, uh, using the My Dry Wells, uh, link that was provided, uh, it is also available on Facebook, uh, that information uh, helps drive policy, perfect time to get a phone call. I love it when my mom calls, uh, sorry about that. So yes, we, uh, you can put that information, if it goes in there, that helps drive some policy, it can help get us revenue to help people with their wells, uh, in some cases, they may be able to help dig, uh, recondition your well, uh, add depth, just a lot of different resources that can come to bear that, but we have to know about it. Right now, uh, the reports that we are getting are from people, but they do not wish to share their location data, which I understand, um, however, when they, all we have is just their general area that they're operating in, as opposed to their actual location, and it makes it a little bit more challenging to use that data to get the resources that we need to be able to help out. But uh, if you are suffering from a dry well, either let us know, or go onto that Facebook page, click on the links for My Dry Well to help report it, and see if we can get some resources to help you.
Okay, thank you, in the past, I know, um, it was recommended to contact the Ag Department, but it's better to contact Environmental Health?
It, it goes in both directions, either the Ag Department or us, uh, either one, um, they're gonna be able to present you with resources and help you out. Um, the Ag Department, uh, their focus is a little bit more on the agricultural products, so if your water shortage is related to your crops or something along the lines, uh, absolutely critical that the Ag Department knows about that. Um, if it's to your drinking water sources, um, we are probably your better resource in that, in that regard, as we have our partnerships with the State, uh, Water Resources Board, things like that, so we have a little bit more, uh, of our goals are towards that end.
Great, I appreciate that, and just for simplicity, they could contact Environmental Health and you can walk them through the process of registering that with the state.
Absolutely, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, any other comment? Supervisor Scott?
I have a question more out of curiosity, of why wouldn't somebody want to give their address that their well went dry to be able to get the resources and help that might be, um, needed or coming?
Traditionally, people have been very private about their wells, um, they don't wish to share the exact location of their well, the condition of their well, how much water is at their well, um, what its recharge rate on is, uh, this is information that is proprietary to the landowner, and they're not always, uh, willing to share that information. Um, that can be as a result of just, you know, good business practice maybe, or there's always the threat, um, that landowners always feel like the state is looking to control their water, um, monitor their water, put uh, meters on their water and charge them for it, I've heard a lot of different things, um, the, the goal of this group is not related to that, we're looking to ensure people have resources when those wells dry up, so that they're not left standing there trying to decide if they're going to water for themselves or water for their livestock, um, we want to be able to make sure people have what they need, um, in a safe way too, not just pulling water out of a creek and trying to sterilize it, so.
Thank you, and I, I'm with Supervisor Pyska, I fully support the task force coming to us with um, any measures that we could do to conserve water and, you know, to educate our public, I think there's still, um, many people out there that, you know, need to be educated on how we can conserve water and, um, best practices, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, any comment from others? So I have a, a few questions, um, can't really take action today, but I think we can provide a little bit of direction, and one of the things that concerns me is the well construction numbers, um, there's two parts that concerns me is, one, it has the possibility to exacerbate the issues of um, regional wells in the area where a new well is dug, depending on what that well is used for, um, and right now I don't believe that, that we differentiate between a residential well and an agricultural well, um, and I don't know, um, if Director Weatherby can be clarified that statement to make sure that it's correct, but from my conversations with him, I don't believe that there is a differentiation in the permitting process, um, and I, I think that we should at least make sure that at this moment in time, uh, wells that are made for residential purposes, uh, should take precedence at this moment in time, and that maybe certain criterias need to be met for new agricultural wells to ensure that there's not gonna be any kind of impact to the surrounding area, uh, before going ahead and drilling. And then my second part is, in my conversations with um, Yolo, Yolo County Flood Control and with Director Weatherby, we do not have an ordinance that has a setback from creeks and other types of waterways for digging wells, which at this point, those waterways would almost be impacted directly by having those wells dug within a certain uh, distance from it, and we don't have any setbacks from those things. Um, and I'd like to see if maybe that's something we can come back to the Board and discuss further, uh, but Mr. Weatherby, if you could please clarify any of my statements that I made, or add to it, please.
Absolutely, so at this time, the mandate for Lake County Environmental Health is when we pull a permit, we do not take into account the use of the water, only the construction standard of the well. There are three types of wells that are provided a permit for, it can be either a domestic use, an agricultural, uh, well, or a public well, and again, the standard is only towards the construction of it, whereas the, uh, a domestic well will differ from an ag well in the casing size, and a public well will differ from the other two in the amount of a sanitary seal being required at 50 feet as opposed to 20 feet. Um, we do have mandatory setbacks to contamination sources, that's kind of the purview, what we're trying to prevent is any contamination to those wells, uh, so there are setbacks to things that you would expect, like a septic tank or a septic leach field, uh, or perhaps a, like a hazardous material location, um, there are setbacks to that, uh, however, those are really the standards that are in place, we do not have a, uh, setback to a creek, um, at this time, and it is something worthy of consideration because a well immediately next to or adjacent to a creek absolutely would impact, uh, the amount of water that actually makes it to our water sources like Clear Lake, uh, so that's something to be considered.
And, and even though the construction is required, uh, to be a separate type of inspection depending on uh, what they're looking to do, when it comes to the usage of the well, it can be used, a domestic well could be used for agriculture, or is, what's the, and I guess I'm asking, um, a community development question, um, which would be, is a domestic well allowed to be used for an agricultural use? Uh, and, and I don't know that anybody on here has that answer, uh, but that's, from what I understand, the answer is no, it doesn't have to preclude it from being used in that way.
At least not by our office, again, we don't make a determination on the use of the water, only to the construction standard.
And so I, I'm looking at our Board and looking if I can get consensus to bring this topic back, I think it's an important topic to discuss, um, especially I know that Supervisor Crandall and myself will be meeting with Yolo County Flood Control later this week, um, and hoping that we can bring some of those conversations back to the table as well, their concern is mainly Cache Creek, uh, because that's what they have the rights to is Cache Creek and the, and the lake, uh, but I'm worried about all of other creeks that people might be more directly impacting by having wells, uh, right there, and granted, I don't think this would be a retroactive situation, but I think that in the future we need to, uh, be certain that we're drawing from a water table and not straight from a waterway, which impacts our lake, which then impacts the amount of drinking water that's available in our lake, uh, for the 65% of people, I thought it was 60, but I was corrected, it's 65% of people that draw, uh, directly from the lake for drinking water. Uh, just looking for consensus for having that conversation. Okay, I'm seeing some yeses, and I see a no, but I have a consensus of four at this moment in time. So we'll go ahead and, um, go to my next, uh, conversation, uh, ramp extensions, I know this has been brought up and it's part of our, uh, one of our objectives from the Drought Task Force, uh, I know that we are waiting for some funding, unfortunately, just from CSAC yesterday, I got another response that trailer bills are still in the works, guidelines are still in the works, uh, and that the money that would be, uh, available to us is coming, but they don't have a specific date for when it would be available, and they would provide more information to me. But I'd like for us to have something that's project ready, uh, where, where are we with looking at that, Director Deleon?
Well, it's, um, pretty much the same that we were a week or so ago when, when we talked about this, uh, Director Ewing and I, uh, are, are pursuing that, um, there are some candidates, uh, candidate ramps, um, uh, you know, it's not a simple project, uh, to extend those, and uh, some of them, what we're, what we're trying to do is find uh, candidates that, that, uh, are a little easier, uh, could be, uh, accomplished with something that's precast, uh, and, um, require minimal, uh, impacts or effort, uh, to the lake bottom to prepare, uh, and, and, you know, we're in the, kind of preliminary engineering phase of that, and it, and that's ongoing.
Okay, appreciate that update. I was also wondering if, um, I don't, I see we have Brenna Sullivan, and wondering, and I know she's part of the task force as well, um, what is the strategy for the Farm Bureau when it comes to cattle versus crops? I know that I've heard of some strategies happening in the Central Valley, I've not heard specifics here, uh, on the difference and how, what our strategy is.
Supervisor Sabatia, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question, my feed cut out right when you were asking it?
Uh, the strategy from the Farm Bureau on helping our agricultural folks when it comes, uh, the strategy difference between cattle and crops?
I would defer that question to the Lake County Ag Department if they're on, they have been attending those Drought Task Force meetings on behalf of agriculture, I don't know if they're on, uh, if you would like, I can get some more specific information on that for the next meeting.
Yeah, and I don't see them on, and I apologize for, uh, directing the question to the wrong person, uh, I'll go ahead and reach out to them and make sure that when we come back to the public, uh, that I can provide that answer. And that's it for all of my comments. Any further comments from the board before we open it up for the public? And seeing none, let's go ahead and open up to the public. I know we had a person here with their hands up for a long time and I can't see their name. Elliot Hurwitz, if we can unmute them, please.
Good afternoon, good morning still. Thanks, couple of quick questions. I know that statewide ag accounts for about 40% of water use. Question is, do we have, do we know, do we have an understanding of just what the percentage of ag water use is in Lake County and how that might relate to new permitting? And following up to, to this, are there, are you aware of any additional resources that may be available at this time for the kind of hydrologic studies that will allow us to evaluate the state of our local aquifers? I know we, you know, we're talking about the number of wells, but you know, a well can be, you know, there's a significant difference in the amount of withdrawal from well to well. And it seems like it would be very important as we go forward to understand how the well and withdrawals are affecting the state of our local aquifers. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your question and comment. I know we have spoken about water studies in the past, definitely something that could still happen in the future, but at this moment in time, nothing has been initiated. As far as the question about ag use of water versus domestic use, I do not believe I have that statistic and I think that the ag commissioner would probably be best primed unless there's somebody on here that wants to raise their hand and has that information available. And I see somebody and Deputy Director Delia Giannis.
Yes, so I do not have an answer to the latter question. I apologize Elliot, but I would just like to go off of one of your previous questions regarding hydrologic studies, et cetera. I know that right now we're currently working for our Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainability Plan. And in that, we are doing hydrologic models. We're in the process of developing that. That's related to our Big Valley Basin. As we know, that is one of our highest production in terms of agriculture. So in the next year, we will have a better idea of that. And as some of the folks on this call had stated, we are in close conversations with the state of California, trying to find active, you know, funds and resources to develop more, you know, just funding opportunities to develop hydrologic models along with ramp extensions, et cetera. So I just wanted to, you know, elaborate on what Chair Sabatia said on that. So I don't have an answer though for the agriculture. I apologize.
No worries, but thank you for the additional information. And I've added that to a list of questions that I will try and obtain the answers to. And let's go and move on to the boardroom. And I see your hand up. We'll get back to you since you've already had a chance to speak. Let's go ahead and start in the boardroom. If you have something to express, please come to the microphone and you have three minutes.
Joan Moss, I was just wondering if the Department of Fish and Game is involved in this? I see deer, squirrels. I wonder if they have water. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that I saw, not on the task force, I thought I saw their name up on the list of partners or something like that.
No, the Department of Fish and Wildlife has not been a regular participant. They would be represented through the state agencies, but they have not had any input into this document.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with a comment? Please come up to the microphone.
My name's Larry Christensen, and I just want to say that a lot of the items that I had down here haven't, you know, covered very well. You know, a lot of the planning and a lot of the drought task force, et cetera. But the one thing I'm not hearing is anything about, you know, the effect on closing the ramps to tourism, which includes recreational, professional, and impacts hotels, restaurants, service stations, tackle shops, guide services with closures, come unemployment, come loss of tax revenues. So how are we going to address that? That's my question.
Thank you very much. And I know that Director Deleon touched on it a little bit. There is progress being made. Unfortunately, being in the state of California, and I'm not sure how other states operate, but I know California requires some environmental impacts to be done and construction design. It's, I wish it was as simple as just laying something down to allow boats and trailers to go down, but we have to go through quite the process. And I'll let Director Deleon elaborate on that if he has more.
Well, yes, I mean, kind of hit the nail on the head. It's, you know, it's a number of issues, funding being one. And so let's, let's set that aside and presume for a minute that, that we can find the funding. The environmental review is typically going to be very, very challenging depending on the type of project that you're going to do. To extend the ramps, and Marina put up a slide in her presentation, the majority of the ramps that are still open around Clearlake right now, the ends of those ramps is, is around minus three to minus three and a half Rumsay. So, you know, some of these ramps are getting close to, to the point where boats that are larger, that require a few feet of water to float the boat off of the trailer, a couple of, you know, some of these ramps are approaching the point where they're not going to be usable. Fifth Street in Lakeport is our deepest ramp at minus 5.3. You know, it would be ideal if we could get the remaining public ramps down to minus five, but, you know, that, it requires dewatering. In some cases, we're gonna, we would have to do excavation to, to extend or lower the bottom elevation in order to get that. And, and so with that comes quite a bit of environmental review. I can tell you that Director Ewing and I, if, if there's an opportunity to, to, to extend a ramp and get that done while the lake is, is at its current state, we're certainly going to do everything we can to make that happen. Because we are very mindful of all the things that the speaker just questioned. We're very aware of the, the lake and, and its impacts to tourism and, and all of the things that, that folks come into Lake County to use the lake bring. So we're very aware of that.
Thank you.
Can I ask Director Deleon a question?
Please.
Does he have an estimate on how much it would cost to extend one of the ramps?
Those, those cost estimates are, are being developed. I don't have the answer to that, right? Just this morning. Again, it depends. If, you know, if it's a dewater, cast in place, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be a much more expensive project than perhaps dragging a precast assembly and just extending the ramp through, through a precast product. And there are a number of those that we're looking at. And, and so the price varies pretty significantly actually from, you know, perhaps $100,000 or, or maybe a little less than that, to hundreds of thousands of dollars for, for something that's going to be precast and, and formed and poured and, I'm sorry, something that's cast in place is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars with, with all of the dewatering and different things that would need to go into that. I hope that, that gives you a sense of the scope. You know, simple project being 75 to 100,000 and a complex project being in the hundreds of thousands.
Thank you for the question Supervisor. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
Just to, just to follow up on the ramp conversation is, I think to respond to your question, yes, we're in the drought right now, but taking advantage of this as an opportunity to look at that long-term. Hopefully what we can do is continue along this process of extending the ramps. So the next time the drought comes around that we're prepared for it and we won't be closing ramps. That, that's the long-term goal. So I know when I mentioned this in the beginning, I appreciate all the hard work of the departments that were doing it, but what I would like to see, like we said, the long-term goal, taking advantage of this opportunity right now with the drought, get these things extended. And so in the future, there won't be closures. We'll just be able to extend them out, you know, and have that opportunity. Because as we all know, you said it greatly, the best asset we have here with the natural resources is our lake and making sure that's accessible to everybody who wants to come enjoy it, even during drought time, is the most important thing we should be thinking about for the long-term success of Lake County and all of our businesses that benefit from that beautiful lake. So that's my thoughts on the long-term vision.
Your time was up.
Three minutes is up, okay.
And I do appreciate that Supervisor Simon did bring this up when we first talked about the drought. This was maybe about a month ago. I appreciate that staff from Water Resources as well as Public Services has followed up on this and is looking into it. One of my goals is that we have something prepared so that when our state unleashes the funds that they promised us back on May 12th, which unfortunately takes longer than we all would like, that we have a project ready to pull, a project to pull off the shelf and say, here's what I need your money for. And I think that's going to be the easiest and fastest way we're going to get it done. And so I appreciate the, what staff is doing, but I, I understand from the public perspective as well, from my perspective, that it is so difficult to be patient with these types of processes. Had we dealt with this back in 2014 in the previous drought, to have a project-ready situation for extending the ramps, then we would be able to pull that off the shelf. And we need to, we need to be better prepared and more forward-thinking than we were back then and having these types of projects ready. So here we are, we are doing the right thing. It's just a matter of timing. And I will.
Sure too. Another opportunity, especially with the CSAC representative, RCRC representatives at the state level is, you know, just as, as Cal Fire does when we have a fire emergency, obviously you get the work done. You know, whether you're cutting the fire lines, other things like that, there are some other things to do during an emergency situation. So maybe some of the, the larger hurdles that we've been talking about with the environmental review and other things, you can push that conversation. This is a current emergency. So why can't there be some releasing of those requirements for those environmental studies and other stuff? So I would just encourage you to have that conversation at the state level, that we should look at it the same way as an emergency, you know, that we do during the fires. You battle it, Cal Fire, our local fire departments do that in the emergency situation and get some things done that usually take a long time to get done. So maybe this opportunity with the drought will open those doors also with the environmental review. So please have those conversations.
Absolutely. And I'm hoping that this is also an opportunity for the Middle Creek Restoration. It's meant to be a storage project as well as a flood control project and a water quality project. And so to extend the water storage so that Cal Fire has access to more water to be able to fight fires, we need to work on those things all simultaneously. So there's a lot of opportunities that unfortunately do come because of the crises that we deal with here in Lake County and hopefully we'll take advantages of many of them as they come down. Any further comments from the public here in the boardroom before I go back to the Zoom room? You really don't want us to talk longer than we. Any, any further public comment from the public? All right, seeing none, let's go back to the Zoom room and I see a new speaker, Betsy Khan. Let's go ahead and start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the board, thank you to everybody on the drought task force. I would like to mention that FEMA has sent a notice of funding availability for up to, well, the total amount is a billion dollars, which is for public assistance. And I was told by our FEMA mitigation specialist at Region Nine that that money would be available for improving our fire suppression systems, which we know have an enormous number of problems. This is a piece of information I've passed along to the Risk Reduction Authority, to the Special Districts Department. I did not know who to contact on this disaster, I mean, this drought group, but I think if you can look at that, it would be an incredible advantage to us. We have many, many, many systems that are inadequate, as we have seen in the fires recently this year in places like Clearlake Oaks. Scott's Valley residents have no fire hydrants. And so I would urge you to please take that into consideration. Special Districts Administrator Scott Harder has that information as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall, did you want to?
Yes, actually I was gonna, I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier, Director Deleon. I was just going to state that the Lucerne Harbor project is being, is underway. I know there's some, there's still some other licenses that need to be applied for and I'm not sure how it looks if we wanted to add extending that ramp to, to the project. I know it probably would, would slow it down. And so I just, maybe we can talk offline about how that looks or something like that. And if not, we just, you know, push it down the line. But I would rather, if we can make it happen, it'd be nice, you know, at least with one of them. So just thinking about that.
Yeah, I can't speak for Director Ewing, but certainly now would be the time if that was something you wanted to entertain. And be happy to discuss that offline with you.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. And Elliot Hurwitz?
Thank you for taking my comments again. Again, echoing the sentiments that Supervisor Simon and Sabatia have said, I think you're right about taking advantage of the opportunity of the current drought, recognizing that these are conditions that are not going, we're not going back to kind of, you know, previous normal conditions, but given the kind of climate trajectory altogether, this is something that we're going to have to deal with significantly over the coming years. And so my question is, how are drought conditions and kind of proposed water use affecting our consideration of new development permits? Altogether, it seems like this is something that should be of significant, you know, a significant dimension as we, as we kind of consider any new development. Thank you.
And I will point you in the direction of our agenda where item number 6.6, which is our next item, is regarding that very sentiment that you just expressed. And so I would say, hold on to that sentiment and come back to that item. And then our last hand up that I have is Brenna Sullivan. Sorry for not seeing you. You are one of our panelists, so I appreciate that.
Thanks Supervisor. I just wanted to quickly circle back to the livestock question. I can't speak to any specific county efforts through the drought task force, but just in case there are livestock producers that are listening, there are drought assistance programs for them through USDA Farm Service Agency programs. There's specific drought disaster assistance for livestock. And our local office is in Ukiah. The number is 707-468-9223. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that information. And seeing no further comment in the boardroom and no further comment in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. I know that there were two supervisors that agreed with the recommendations. I'm just looking, is there a consensus to agree with the recommendations that were proposed to us during the presentation? Okay, I'm seeing a consensus. And so thank you very much for the presentation and we will have another presentation in the near future. Appreciate all your time and efforts.